Okay, it's now seven o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If everyone can please stand to say the Pledge Allegiance. The flag is over here to my left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. I am going to read our school committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster." As we begin, if anybody is videotaping other than obviously our TV access station, please disclose that now. Having no one done so, we will move on to our open forum. If anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please do so at this time. And for the last and final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please do so now. Having no one step forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting. We are going to move on to the student communication and then student report. There are no communications this evening? Thank you, student report. I believe we have some students here.
Yes.
If the three of you can come up to the microphone and let us know your names.
Hi, my name is Juliana Pompey. I'm a sophomore. I play field hockey, basketball, and lacrosse. And these are my teammates from the girls' basketball team.
Hi, my name is Shannon.
Can you just do me a favor? Because I think you really need to speak into the microphones so we can speak louder. So either sit down and you can lower or pass it to each other.
What may I do? Hi, my name is Juliana Pompey. I'm a sophomore. I play field hockey, basketball, and lacrosse. And these are my teammates from the girls' basketball team.
Hi, my name is Shannon Smith. I'm also a sophomore at LHS, and I play soccer and basketball at LHS.
Hi, I'm Kira Forsberg, and I'm also a sophomore here at LHS, and I also play soccer and basketball.
Okay. This past Thanksgiving, the Blue Devils had a big 32-0 victory over the Red Raiders. Clubs are now reporting a higher-than-average number of attendees. And our test-and-stay program is very successful, and many students are participating. Last week, I actually participated in this. It was really efficient, and I got to go back to my day right after it.
Our winter sports at LHS began last week, including boys' and girls' basketball, boys' and girls' hockey, indoor track, wrestling, and cheerleading. We hope that you'll be attending many of the games, especially girls' basketball, cheering on your three favorite players. There are new hoops and new floors and some upgrades to the gym, which we're really thankful for, especially coming off of the new basketball season. The Appleseed Restaurant is now open to the public again, and we'd love for a lot of people to come down and support. There's going to be an Alice drill this week, which there's going to be more information coming off of that. And there's going to be a door decorating contest for the holiday season, and Guidance is looking to retain their trophy.
The LHS Winter Concert will take place on Thursday, December 16th, in the LHS Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. The tickets are $5. There will be a bake sale and a 50-50 raffle. This will be featuring the LHS Chorus, LHS Select Choir, Ignition Show Choir, LHS Jazz Band, and LHS Concert Band.
We're now at the midpoint of Semester Two, so progress reports will be coming out soon. Speaker Series was up and running last week. Noah Gray spoke to our Life Skills students. Mr. Christopher Mason, Colonel of the Massachusetts State Police, spoke to our Street and Practical Law classes. And Mr. Brian Mendoza, a Telemundo news reporter from Philadelphia, spoke to our ELL classes on Friday.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Thank you. That was certainly a bright spot. Before we get started tonight, we really want to speak to the horrific events that happened which shocked our hearts truly to the world and everyone who has been impacted. Once again, schools across the country are reexamining every security measure they currently have in place. Our district has continued to invest in resources for years and will continue to practice drills, as you heard tonight, train our students and staff, as well as network with our local police and fire department. These malicious events need to stop. I'm appealing to everyone in our community to work together for the protection of all of our schools. We do not take threats, comments, or any behavior that suggests such things lightly. Swift action will be taken, and the authorities will be notified. Should anyone need our help in dealing with these, please notify our building principals as soon as possible and get the help that you may need. Also, COVID, COVID, COVID is impacting everyone's daily routines right now. We're testing more and more students and staff and having to contact families. I know that many are getting frustrated by the interruption. Please know that we do understand that. It's hard, it's consistent. We are testing and notifying as quickly as possible, and we really appreciate everybody's support in getting this done. Our schools are inundated with this right now, and everyone is working to their max to make sure the kids are taken care of. So let's talk about a little bit of good news. As you heard, our restaurant opened. Almost two years later, we are back open to the public. And you can see they've painted, they're revamping, they're updating. The menus have been amazing. It's all new recipes and healthy, fresh produce, local produce. And so we're open Tuesday through Friday, 11:00 to 12:30, but you must make reservations so they know what the head count is and make sure that we still are spacing things out. The phone number up here is 978-534-7735, extension 2618. We really would love to see you come in. The students just love having the service help out. Also, one of our ELA teachers, Sherry Duffy, and one of her students, Lillian Hi, have been selected as the VFW Post 1807 First Place Winner for the Voice of Democracy Speech Contest. Lillian will be awarded a computer and now goes to compete at the state and national level. So we want to say great job to both of them as well.
Awesome, congratulations.
Yeah, very nice.
Well done.
And lastly, I can't say enough about our food service manager, Bob Burr. Last Friday, he was secretly awarded the Regional Heroes Award from Chartwell's for his outstanding work. Through all COVID, Bob has gone above and beyond to ensure that no child would go hungry. His exceptional team has worked seven days and continues to demonstrate a work ethic that is honorable. And last year, he won a national award. My only hope is that he stays with us because he is such an asset to our school system. So we want to also congratulate Bob Burr on this award once again.
Very well deserved.
Yes, very well.
Congratulations.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move forward with our presentations. We've got a tuned presentation.
Yes. Hi, Ms. Eileen, can you hear us?
Hey, guys, I can hear you great. I love hearing all the updates.
Yes, we're very busy around here. So, Eileen, I'm going to give you the floor right away. Everybody has previewed their packet. I was not given any questions ahead of time, but I can still gather them, and we can discuss them. I know we have another meeting on Thursday, okay?
Great, all right. Well, thank you so much for having me there. Steven, is my feedback okay? Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you again for... So the org diagnostic, I mean, has been a beast of an effort, and I just want to thank everyone that's been involved, either with the inputs or with reading the results. So today, I wanted to make sure we have a shared understanding of Lemmonster's challenges. And I won't be reading every bullet on every slide, but just going at a level to where I can narrate with a high-level speed. And then if there's any questions, we can come. I think there's a process and procedure for those. I think we're good. All right, so Lemmonster Public Schools' vision and mission. I like to read these aloud just to ground us in where we are. So I know you may know them, but our vision, to develop competent and creative thinkers, curious and confident learners, and compassionate citizens that positively impact our world. That's so relevant, especially with Superintendent Deacon's opening remarks on the shootings that we've seen just recently. So I think that's an awesome vision and very relevant now. Our mission, every child, every classroom, every day. So there's a lot of words on this slide, but this is just to show you the type of data that we collected in order to create the diagnostic report. On the top, you have your performance data. So we got this from, you know, the state website, and this is publicly available data. Then in the middle tier, we had our team watch video observations as well as conduct walkthrough observations. I think data spent a full two days, could be classrooms, I believe, in classrooms looking for different areas of student culture as well as curriculum instruction and assessment. And then last but not least, the constituent perspectives. We had almost 200 staff members and 700 family members respond to the survey, which was really incredible. And so all this is culminated together to summarize the findings that you're seeing today. So the strengths, I'm going to actually focus on this slide here because there's not one slide that supports each strength. So I'll go through these and narrate, and then go to the challenges. So first and foremost, I think y'all should be so proud of a positive student culture at the school level and further evidence, supported by stakeholder evidence who stated that Lemmonster Public Schools offer a safe and caring learning environment for students. So this is not always the case, and this is like to have that joyful, safe culture for students and families and staff members is just something that takes so much work. And I think I felt it really homely in your district, right? Like, people are really proud and invested there. So kudos to y'all. Similarly, stakeholders appreciate the dedication and commitment toward the impact. I had so many interviews, read so many survey responses talking about individual staff members going above and beyond, right? And that was just a norm and something that they do because it's family and people take it personally. And then the last bullet, I think this is, as a result, I believe, of a very strategic concerted effort on family and community engagement. I have to tell you, the analysts in our team stopped copying the positive quotes about family communication and engagement when she reached 100. She was like, there was just so many, like, it was an overwhelming amount. And the net promoter score, which I can explain in a little bit, was just so resoundingly positive across all families, but particularly for families of color. So again, kudos to y'all on having that work so well. I was, I'm going to mention net promoter score again. So maybe I'll just, I'll say quickly. I don't want to take too much time. It's basically people that promote on a scale from 0 to 10, like, your 9s and 10s minus, if those are called the promoters, minus the percentage of detractors, who are people that attract, that rate your district on a scale from 0 to 6. Getting a positive net promoter score is extremely difficult. Getting zero is actually really impressive because it means that you now have the equal amount of promoters and detractors. To see the level of family net promoter score that I saw at Lemmonster was just really impressive. This is a supporting slide, just further showing evidence about the attention to student culture and support for positive behavior at the school level. So just a little bit of evidence supporting the first slide that I just... There's actually a ton of strengths, but the team has asked me to, you know, focus on the areas that we want to talk about more. So I will transition now to the challenges. So on this slide is a summary of the key gaps. In this section, I actually think it makes more sense for me to go slide by slide because each one of the slides ties to one of these bullets on this summary. And I also want you to know, I've done a lot of org diagnostics, and teaching is hard. Running a school district, schools, and humans, and students with the pandemic is almost an impossible task. So don't be, I think if anything, we should feel empowered by knowing that these gaps exist. And to be honest, most of our CIRCO members already knew about these challenges. And so just know that to have more gaps and challenges is normal and expected, especially in these circumstances. So we'll start first with college going rates. Our college going rate fell in 2019, and we're below the state. And when you look on the graph on the right, most of our subgroups are below the state average. So you can see where that line is, have a dotted line at 72% with the average. And then you see where, starting with our right students and down, we're falling below the average. And on the left is the overall trend going from 70% for college going, decreasing to 61% in 2019. So staying along the lines of academic performance, you're going to see a lot of slides. I'm going to try to notate for you the grade and the subject. So this is 10th grade ELA and math. ELA being left on the side, math on the right. They both were below the average in 1819 pre-pandemic and 2021. Our ELA performance held steady, like, from 49% to 50%, but our math greatly declined from 50 to 20%. I will also say, the math in this country doesn't do well on Zoom. Like, math scores nationwide have just gone down. We found that math over virtual instruction or asynchronous instruction is just really, really sensitive and not conducive to online work. So you'll see that trend throughout math in all different grade levels. So now, we're focused on 3-8 ELA and math. Both pre-pandemic and in 2021, we're underperforming the state. And then, so you can see again, on the left, ELA, and then on the right, math. And then you can see in the gray bars the state average and in blue, that would say. So now, digging into our academic performance, looking, digging deeper, excuse me, into our subgroups, we see that with our 2021 ELA performance, there's very big, there's a significant variation with our subgroups. But you'll see our subgroups race. Ethnicity on the left, socioeconomic status in the middle, and our special populations on our right. And you see the dotted purple line showing the average of ELA percent met or exceeded expectations. And similar to ELA, math performance for Black, Latinx, economically disadvantaged, EL, and Sped students also falls below the district average. So you'll see again, similar groupings with race, socioeconomic status, and special populations in the average line that's dotted with 22. So that wraps up, we talked about college going, we talked about math in ELA, and we talked about subgroups. I'm speaking of subgroups right now, but talking now about discipline. So when we look at our suspension group for Black and Latinx students, they're suspended almost two times more than white students, even though white students make up 45% of the population. So switching gears now to more curriculum instruction and assessment, this is the first slide about our curriculum in place. And so the team, Maureen, Renee, Jillian, Michelle, they were diligently to get me examples of, and tell me, showing curriculums that they had in different grade levels and subjects. And you can see the color coding on the bottom where there's like, green is positive, yellow is mixed, and the red is findings more negative than positive. We went grade area and content area in this chart to show you where we're standing in terms of using the high-quality, externally-betted curriculum. I think this is one, like, working closely with Maureen and her team, that they are well aware of. And really, like, I know in our meeting tomorrow, we're discussing about the plan to roll out these different levels, these different types of curriculum by grade and subject area. One finding here, and this, I think this is like the same slide I used on the district I had last week. Artifacts show that teachers across grade bands create and/or alter curriculum, potentially resulting in gaps in access to grade-level rigor. So what's really common is that teachers using tier-one material, the high-quality, externally-betted curriculum, many times teachers will alter that to a point where it's actually not used with fidelity, and it's therefore not truly a tier-one material. And so we saw this, like, some, you know, teachers like to use worksheets from online. And we see this in video observations. We saw this in video observations as well. When we took a look at the structure system to enable strong instruction, so things like collaborative planning, observation and feedback, and professional development, there were like structures there, but just opportunities always to just strengthen these areas. So you'll see on the right-hand column examples of observations that we saw and some takeaways on ways to strengthen. So, okay, let me take a step back. So I think these two slides are actually pretty fascinating. So we see like limited evidence of these structures here. But when we look at our survey results, 72% of staff believe that the expectations, that believe that the expectations of effective teaching are clearly defined at their school. Similarly, 62% of staff agree that they get enough feedback and that the school is committed to their instructional practice. And a little over half of staff are satisfied with the support they receive at school for instructional planning. So when I looked at the survey results, I at first put that as a positive, right? That staff are really are happy with the level of support they're receiving with observation, feedback, and instruction. But when we look at the structures that we have in place, we actually have not only room to grow in those structures, but we have to change my sense as well with staff that we know you're happy with, generally happy with what we have. Here's how we're going to even further improve it and unlock the potential tier-one in the future. So this is shifting gears to demographics. And so we're seeing that over 95% of Lemmonster staff identify as white, while less than 50% of students do. Again, I think I had a very similar slide on a report last week. I think it's amplified as well with the pandemic, right? Like, overall worker shortage, overall teacher shortage. And really hard to get high-quality teachers to bring candidates from all backgrounds. So this isn't unusual, but seeing that there's a gap here, certainly, you know, it wasn't a surprise to the team, but was a challenge that we wanted to discuss today as well. Okay, I was told to move quickly, and now I'm wondering if I went too fast. So I will pause here and talk about multiple factors. So why, the org diagnostic was so important as just like, for me to get to really understand and go under the hood of Lemmonster and for y'all to have, hopefully, what I feel was a valuable external non-biased perspective, right? Like, a 360 about the entire district, like, all nuts and bolts. And it's scary, and I applaud your courage to go through the org diagnostic. Like, if someone did an org diagnostic for me, I'd be terrified. Like, I wouldn't want to know all that, right? But here we are, looking at Lemmonster, who we know as a district is family, right? And personal people. So thank you for allowing us to take a deeper look into your district. I think what's exciting is that now that we know what our key challenges are, we'll be able to create a plan rooted in our current reality. And so we have been working with the CIRCO on priorities and initiatives. And we actually have a meeting on Thursday, a CIRCO meeting, to start breaking this down until we get smaller and smaller in our scope of work to where team members know the deliverables, the action items, and the scope and sequence year in year of how we're going to address these key challenges. I'll say too, the next time that I'll be with y'all is on February 7. When I meet with you then, I will be excited to share with you the progress that we have on priorities and initiatives and deliverables. So it's again fantastic that you and I, we all have a shared knowledge of org diagnostic because we'll know why we've created the plan, structured the plan the way it is. And then, Paula, I hope it's okay. Could you talk about the procedure for questions from today, please?
Sure. I had asked members of the committee to submit questions ahead of time, to please preview this, submit them, and then I would bring them forth. At this time, I don't have any questions for you, Eileen, but I'm going to leave that open. So if something has, you know, jarred a thought or a comment or a question, we can keep this dialogue going back and forth, considering we all talk pretty much every day, right? She's shaking her head, yes.
I'm sorry, I was trying to mute myself when I'm not talking about laughing.
Oh, okay. So if there are questions, I think your presentation was exactly what we needed. After COVID, we really needed to see where we are at because the landscape has forever changed. And as we're trying to develop the next five-year strategic plan, your team really helped us dig as deep as we possibly could go. And so now, we sit with, you know, the bare truth, and we start to build our plan. I'm excited for the work that we're starting on Thursday. Brandon is as well. And we will be bringing that forward. I believe in the transparency and the understanding of where all of this information is coming from is pertinent to this work. So as a steering committee, we really did. We left our egos at the door. And we said, please tell us exactly what you're hearing, what you're finding. And everything that they have brought forward is evidence-based. It's not that, you know, I think this is going on or I have a feeling this is going on. This is all evidence-based. And truly, they visited 50 classrooms over three days. And the information is, it's right on. So we have a lot of work to do, which is great, but at least we know what we're dealing with. And so I feel very positive bringing it to the committee and then the plan as well in a few more months.
Thank you so much for having me today. And one thing, if it's okay, I wanted to, again, just, y'all really left your egos at the door, and it's just, this team was just so energized, and it's just a pleasure to work with y'all. One other thing, too, Paula, that I really picked up at district is, so for the school committee, there, some of these things, like, that were uncovered, like, you know, a month ago, we're already in the process of addressing, right?
Correct.
Like, with the two, we have a parallel path. And we're already seeing, like, the principals and such office staff being trained on things like rigor. So I just, the speed at which we're able to respond to this is really impressive. And just, again, thank y'all for your time and partnership and look forward to seeing your questions.
Yes, your facilitation has been more than helpful, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. They are so resourceful.
And I appreciate all the stakeholders' honesty and participation. That's so important.
All right. Thank you. So moving forward, we are going to talk about pupil services and social emotional learning.
Hi, everyone, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Hopefully, put my mask on. So I just wanted to give a little update to everybody about the world of special education and what's happening. And so I wanted to share with you in the first slide a little bit about the coordinators, the amount of coordinators that we have supporting us. Do I need to, do you need me to do a clicker? You're going to do it for me? Thank you, thank you. The, we increased, well, we actually had a part-time coordinator last year, but we kind of expanded that position, which has allowed us to have more staff, special education staff in the building, which is great because our coordinators are really skilled, and it's nice that they're able to do something other than just do team meetings, that they can be there to help facilitate when maybe a crisis is happening or somebody needs... or somebody needs, um, some additional support, also to help with the teacher evaluation, and we partner with a tune as well, um, with the next step, that we want to be a part of that as well. Um, some of us share the out-of-district caseload, and it's really worked out very well. I, the, the one thing that's happened with COVID is that those meetings are now done remotely. The out-of-district programs are doing a really nice job organizing that. And we've had very successful meetings, and it also means that our staff is in the building. You know, we used to have to get in the car and drive there and go to the meeting, we'd be gone for a long time. Now we're back in the building, and it's something that we're sharing together, so that's working out very well. So, you know, when you're thinking about special education staff, that's more than just special education teachers. And we've had some challenges this year in trying to find certain, um, professional staff. Um, speech therapists have been very difficult to find. We've also, as you've heard from last year, we're still down three school psychologists. Um, but we've gotten a lot of support from, um, some, um, contract services that we're using for our evaluations. And, um, I found a, um, global assessment program who's going to start joining and partnering with us in January for the remainder of the school year. We're going to keep posting those school psychology jobs and still hoping that we're going to be able to hire some staff. But in the meantime, special ed doesn't stop, we still have to meet our timelines, we still have to do our testing. Um, we did a little event this Saturday, um, behind the scenes, we were calling it evaluation extravaganza. We hired twelve school psychologists to come Saturday morning. And, um, we ended up testing close to thirty students. And, um, parents were just wonderful, we treated it like an appointment, parents liked it. They liked the idea that their child wasn't getting pulled from class for an assessment. And so it was pretty successful. We'll see how things go over the winter, and then we'll kind of revisit it in March. And, um, if we need to, we now have a little template, we've got a plan, we'll be able to do it again. I think the other two, um, places that we're struggling for hires is our ABA tutors and our paraprofessionals. And that's kind of everywhere, no matter where you talk to people, they're talking about that. I am noticing in the last month that we are getting some more applicants. Um, I am happy to say at this point, we have all of our special education teachers, so that, that's huge. And we are very fortunate because not everybody is as lucky as we are in that area. So contract services, it, there's a lot that we do with contract services. We are actually in pretty good shape because a lot of these services are collaboratives to help us find, um, staff members to support some of these areas. And actually, Leominster has always had good relationships with contract service providers in the community. They like working in Leominster, they like coming into our schools. And so a lot of this has just organically happened, that we continue to have contractors to support our program. Some of the new, um, contract services are, we've, um, starting last year, we have a Portuguese interpreter that does some consulting work with us. We're just finding a high need for more students who need that level of support at a team meeting, and also reports, IEPs, and, um, testing that parents need translated, so that's going very well. And then we have returned quite a few students back to district who have different kinds of needs, either vision or hearing, and so we need teachers of the deaf and teachers of the visually impaired. Again, not always easy to find, but, um, our collaboratives are supporting us in those areas. And then we always like to look at our demographics, it's always interesting to me, it doesn't seem to change very much when you look at it. It kind of stays kind of steady. Um, our numbers are a little bit lower right now, which surprised me because I feel like we had a lot of students move in over, um, the summer and the fall. But as of right now, those are our numbers for, um, students in the different disability categories. So most of you know about our programs across the district. As you know, our sub-separate programs are not in every single building, but they are in different places across the district. Um, I wanted to just think for a couple of minutes about, you know, we talk a lot about our resource and inclusion programs. And it's been really nice to see over the last couple of years that those resource room classes, you're seeing less and less of them, especially as you get into middle school and to high school. Um, the cabinet has really talked a lot about, they want inclusive learning, which means having more students in front of the general ed teacher with special education supports. And we know that those students are the students that are going to do much better on MCAS, are going to move towards getting a high school diploma. And so we've been working really hard on trying to have less and less of that. Doesn't mean that we don't ever have any. Um, there's always going to be some students who are going to need that layer of support, but we're, we're definitely noticing, um, as we've been talking with families about why we want their students in front of the inclusive classroom. And they've been partnering with us around those decisions. So here's right now, as from FY nineteen to FY twenty-two, the amount of students that are out of district. Um, even though our numbers are a little bit lower now, we definitely have six students that are moving to a forty-five day placement. Our biggest challenge has been our students with social emotional needs. Some of them were students that we knew that might need that layer of support, and some have been surprises to us. And we feel pretty lucky that we have that opportunity. We actually have had one student who had to go out for a forty-five day placement is coming back to us. And so we're really trying to work with those out-of-district programs when we send kids for those forty-five days. Can we do a stabilization pro- program? How can we get them back in the school? And we definitely want to think about it deeply so that students are coming back successfully. Um, do they have a plan for them? Can they help us, you know, navigate that? So it's always nice when we see those students coming back. But, um, I think we're, we're pretty strong right now, and we, there aren't too many unknowns until students move in, then it's an unknown. But for what we know right now, we kind of know which students need what kind of support.
Can I just hear something on that slide?
Sure.
Is there a title?
There could be.
Funding cost.
I'm pretty sure Sue's referring to the top.
Yeah, looks like it didn't make sense.
I was going to ask the same question.
Oh, what, what's that? I'm sorry.
Ninety percent cut.
Surely the funding cost for any of them is more like six million and six hundred fifty-three thousand.
Right, and then the forty-five day students, that's, that's about what it's going to cost for those students to go out for a forty-five day placement.
But it's not six hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Six point five.
Oh, yes, correct.
So what's the real number?
Yeah, it should be six million fifty-three, yeah. I can fix that, sorry about that.
Six five three?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. Um, and then, we've been doing this for a while, we've worked, been working with applied behavior analysis, which is, um, a, um, group that's coming in and doing some consulting work with our ABA program. And then we've had some support for our student support center. And here are some of the staff that's helping us do, you know, with, looking at those programs. Those are our programs where our students with the, um, you know, highest level of need. And so those are the programs that we're always wanting to look at how we can improve, what kind of resources. Let's stay, stay ahead of the curve. Let's look at what the out-of-district programs are doing and see what we can do to match things back in district, stay current. Our parents are, you know, paying attention to that. They know that they're supporting their child with a disability, they know what kinds of resources should be available to them. So we've asked, um, ABI to come in and support, um, and look at our programs and to give us some feedback, where are some ways that we can grow? What's some additional training we can give staff? Um, right now, they're really focusing on early childhood. And, um, and we're getting some great feedback, and they're in the building on a regular basis. So the staff feels really comfortable with them being there and able to ask questions and for us to sort of get them to buy into some of that staff training as well. Um, hopefully, once that evaluation is done, we can start looking at our middle and high school. And then our student support centers, we actually have through that, um, through John Vera's program, he used to be a Walker consultant, which is a school for students with social emotional needs. He has a variety of staff working in each one of our schools, they're there on a regular basis doing consulting. They're in person, but they're also available to us when we have a crisis situation that we can do a Zoom meeting with them, talk it through with them. Um, and they're getting to know our students, they actually started with us last year, so they actually know our schools, know our staff. And, um, so they've been working with us for a little while. And the staff is now asking, what other training can we have? They're telling us, you know, we want to really know more about how to support students with trauma. And so we're definitely going to be doing some more training with them. Um, so I'm open for any questions.
Yeah, uh, it, it, it's a, it's a double-pronged question. The, uh, the outer district they had over here, three students aging out by April twenty twenty-two. And I was looking at, I was looking at, I was looking at the transition.
Mm-hmm.
When they age up, what happens? What, what's the, oh, algorithm, or the graph, or whatever, which way you want to, you know, what happens?
So usually when we're talking about students that are aging out, they're students that we've committed, been committed to till they're twenty-two.
Right.
And so those students, the year before, we start having, um, the adult services coming to meetings and making a plan and budgeting for those plans. And so you can imagine during the pandemic that that was really a tough thing because a lot of our students get a huge layer of support from the program that they're in to transition them to these adult services, and a lot of these kids weren't able to get that. We actually, Leominster, we really partnered with a lot of those programs, and we found ways to transition students once their, their programs opened up. But that's, you know, those are students we've had for a very long time. We certainly want to make sure they're transitioning to the world of work or a program.
And is the, uh, and I, I won't be jabber about it, but once they, they've aged out, they're aging out, their program, is it sustainable? How, how do you try to make sure, guarantee that, you know, someone's going to be with them? Are they going to monitor them or mentor them, or whatever semantics you want to use?
Well, it has a lot to do with what the parents want. The parents have a lot to say about the next steps and what they want for their child. They actually get to go look at programs, and they have some, um, you know, they're able to make some recommendations. And so every family wants something different. Some families just want their child to have a part-time experience during the day, other parents want something richer. Some parents are looking for, you know, um, something very individualized. So the parents have a lot to say about next steps.
Anybody else have a question? Melissa?
Um, just quickly, so obviously during COVID, a lot of kids weren't in physical classrooms and able to be assessed. Are you seeing, um, now that kids are back in classrooms and in front of a person in real time, are you seeing a change in need and assessment now that you're seeing the kids and their ability to get work done in a classroom and be in a group environment?
There definitely are some places where some kids are, it's been a challenge for sure. And we've also had, you know, a lot more parent referral for students for assessments. And, you know, parents know their babies, they know when something that it doesn't seem to be working right. And so we have had quite a few initial evaluations. Um, but we've been testing all along, and so we have a pretty good sense about where the needs are. So, but yeah, I, I would definitely say that there's been some challenges. And, you know, the biggest area has been in our SSC program, our student support center, has been the most challenging place for sure.
Does anybody else have a question? Sue?
Just one comment. Um, so it's interesting when you look at the number of out-of-district students through the years, how that number's going down, which is good, but the cost is going up.
Correct.
Which we know. So just looking at the eighty-seven, which is great, I mean, in twenty-one, you had a hundred and two out-of-district students, and now you have eighty-seven, potentially ninety-three of the six. So the forty-five day placements are going to collaboratives mostly?
Most of them, I would think two of them are not, but the rest are, yeah.
So, so roughly though, let's say, you know, what's the percentage of those forty-five day placements that usually end up staying in the, yeah? Just, I mean, because I'm thinking from a budgetary perspective.
Right.
You know, the number looks good now, but we know it changes overnight, so.
And even parents ask that question when we have that, you know, when we make that recommendation for a student to go for a forty-five day, what's going to actually happen? And, you know, for some students, we know that some of the behaviors or some of the learning challenges that a student has, since we're going on for a long time, and we know that a forty-five day, when we've gotten to that point, that, you know, maybe that student's going to need a little bit longer time. We have some other students that are more, having more trauma. And those trauma students, we really want to be hopeful that maybe if they have that forty-five day, and we have somebody that can sort of put together a plan in a smaller environment that we'll be able to transition them back. But it really is so individualized, and it's not unusual for them to stay. And I'll say that to families because they panic about it. Yeah, are you going to just bring them back? Again, it's an individual discussion, and parents definitely are part of that discussion.
So theoretically, looking at the, the six students, which really isn't that much for the forty-five day placement, well, how much, let's just assume they all end up placing.
Right.
So what are we looking at?
It could be four or five, yeah.
Yeah. To clarify though, that's six kids moving to forty-five day placements. And that's not kids in longer-term placements.
Correct.
That's, that's an add-on. Right, but that was the question, if they end up staying, what, what is that number going to be?
And that's why we really try to partner really with those, with the collaboratives because we want them to, um, we want to be able to stabilize those students and bring them back if that's, that's the case. And we also want to give them that opportunity to stay there if that's what they need, so.
Right.
We, sometimes we don't know till we get to that meeting and we're looking at the data together.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on my two colleagues' questions, a dirty question, it's a bad question because I'm saying what you just said. Oh, my, my bad.
And there's no bad or dirty question.
Well, to me, to me it is, because when you said something about budgetary, somebody said about budgetary.
Mm-hmm.
How, how, I just bit my tongue, how often do you use that word budgetary when talking to the parents?
Oh, we don't talk.
About the long-term.
Yeah, we don't talk to parents about, about finances just because it's our responsibility to provide a free and appropriate education. And so we don't, it's not the parents' burden, it's our burden, and, um.
I guess, because basically, I was piggybacking.
Mm-hmm.
I was asking for the same thing about the students aging out and then the transitioning. What happened? You know, I think you were saying it perhaps, or she was saying it. When all of a sudden they get out there, their parents want them to do this, 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 you know, either one day, two day, but what happened when there's no there there?
Right. Well, there, there's definitely the, um, it's called six-eighty-eight programming, and it happens after the student turns twenty-two, and it can happen before that. If the student gets a high school diploma and they need a layer of support, we can still advocate for them to have that support. But a lot of it has to do with, you know, again, what the family wants and, um, what the student's able to participate in, but it does look different than, than what the school does because we're mandated to do things, those programs are not. And so the parents really have to buy into the partnership, and the student has to buy into it. And so we do try to, that's why we try to talk with families way in advance about that transition. We don't want to be talking about it a month before, we want to talk about it two years before the student.
At least two years before.
Yeah, so that parents are prepared for that next step.
And you're looking with other state adult agencies?
Well, that's what I, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah.
I, I realized I was picking at you.
Oh, you're not picking at me.
Because I was, I was trying to comb out.
Yeah, no, it's not that, it's complicated, we live it every day, so we.
Suspicion what the answer was.
Right.
But you know, a good lawyer always knows the answer to the question they ask. But I just wanted to pick it out of you so they can hear it out there.
Yeah.
What the end result is, is it going to be an end result?
Right.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Lauren, I want to answer your first question, which is the budgetary implication is not about whether to get the placement. That's what I'm asking, make sure we got the, get the budget to cover.
I know, but I'm not going to raise a question about budgetary, somebody here did.
And I just, I'm not, I don't mean to jump on you. I'm just, the point of the question is, if, you know, as Sue said, if the, if the, if placements become permanent, there's extra costs there, we just have to make sure that we budgeted appropriately so we can cover that cost. That's not determined, like, we want the student to get what the student needs. And we're required to give the student what the student needs.
Exactly.
So, so, and that's, the budgetary thing is, we just, we've got to make sure we put enough dollars in that bucket to pay for what the student needs.
It's still a creature in our womb.
And that's why special education is across the hall from the business office. Well, well, that keeps me in line. I can't high-farm.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much, it was very informative, we appreciate you coming forward.
Good to meet you, everybody, it's nice to see you. I'm Jenny Lundy, and I'm going to give you an update on social emotional learning, also known as SEM. Um, so to start with the basics, there are five components that we look at. We look at self-regulation and. and self-awareness, social awareness, decision-making skills, um, and relationship skills. And so with those, with that lens, um, I'm gonna talk about some of the opportunities, some informal, some formal that are happening in the district. Part of COVID has driven that, um, based upon the world in which we were, we are in and where the students were at, um, with isolation and lack of socialization, we're definitely seeing differences, um, or more intense or significant behaviors in the sense of not talking with one another, not looking at each other. I mean, I'm talking about just the basic, how to have a conversation. And so this is really about looking at individuals in buildings, whether it's students or staff, looking at it from a building perspective and to a district perspective, and then communities because we use our community resources quite a bit. This is a whole, like it takes a village. We've heard that before and that's what this is really about. It's important for all of us to have social emotional learning and awareness. And that's only going to make our students better people and more successful in their life. So to start with, it's the informal pieces such as, so our building administrators do a really nice job supporting our staff. Um, and we know where they're at right now and people, and not just staff, but just in general, people are in a really tough place right now. And we recognize that. And so when we have professional development, offering breakfast and coffee and getting there a little bit early or having food throughout the day, that makes, that makes a difference. There are staff in, in the buildings that, for example, are, um, painting rocks and there are different positive messages on the rocks. And they're sending them to other staff in the building or even into the district. That makes a difference. We have food drives happening, particularly right now for this year, um, or this time of year, where students are bringing in different food items, but then they're also organizing it. And so helping them become more socially aware of there might be other people that aren't in, um, the same places they're in. And so just giving them more of a global perspective. There are some schools that have taken into account, so all of our schools do their check-ins and check-outs with students and that looks different. But there are some schools, in the elementary schools right now, have created a little more formal check-in and check-out where they surveyed the students, just three questions. And the students that they found, um, either didn't have a connection to somebody in school or weren't liking school, they then started this check-in and check-out, um, with the support staff and administration. And, um, there was just a, there was really just a handful of students, but it makes, it makes a difference. And so they were able to identify those kids that might have gone under the radar. So some of the other pieces that you might have heard before, the more formal pieces, so we still have Interface, which I know that, so Interface is a referral service that you can call and get on a waitlist for therapist or counselor or whatever your child or yourself need. We know that the waitlists are long. I mean, that's, it's not just in Lemonster, it is everywhere in the world. But getting yourself on there, they can help you do that and find people that are close to us or whatever specific need you're looking for. So that, that's still available. Um, the other piece is, is that we have counselors coming in from enlightened interventions. And they're in every building. So it's an outside therapist, um, where our support staff and administration and teachers have referred certain students and if they might need a little bit more and need it in the schools, then that's happening there. So they're connecting to somebody else. We were able to have Nature's Classroom happen. Um, there were a couple, a couple of schools that had Nature's Classroom come to us just for a couple of days. We had one of our middle schools go to Nature's Classroom this past fall and then the other middle school is planning on doing that for the springtime. So that's, you know, those pieces are still happening. One of the exciting pieces that I had talked to, um, to the newer members, um, is our second step program. So it's K to eight, um, evidence-based SEL curriculum. So one of the exciting things about it is that, um, we've never as a district had a, an SEL curriculum that was, um, consistent throughout school buildings, never mind the grades. So K to eight, so that means that people are using the same language. So if I were to move within Lemonster and I was at JA, but now I'm at Francis Drake, I'm going to be getting the same messaging, um, which is really important for our students. And it helps create a culture and a climate, um, where it's not just support staff that are, um, presenting the material. It's all online. But there are teachers, there are health teachers, there are gym teachers. It's, it really depends on how the school set it up. But it's about, sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to be ignoring you over there. It was, it was, it's really about creating a climate and a culture within our school where students feel safe to be able to talk to somebody, to have those connections. Because I, I might have a better connection with the gym teacher and it's pretty cool that they're able to be using that same language. So it was, we want, I guess I want to thank the administration, um, K to eight, for being willing to try this out. Because everybody was kind of piecemealing or had their own, um, curriculums happening, which was working, but I think we're, we're looking at, um, hopefully that this universal language, they still have some anonymity with it, which is great. But this is really helpful for our students. And then this goes into talking about the high school. So the high school has always and is always a different animal when it comes to curriculums. Oftentimes you have curriculums for elementary and middle school, but it's harder in the high school and that's not just in Lemonster. And so a couple of pieces that were brought to our attention was, um, a peer mediation program. And that is through the mediation services of North Central Mass, which is right here in Lemonster. We're starting that process, well, where? We'll be able to, um, utilize, uh, bring eighth graders into it as well. So when they come in to, to being freshmen, they'll have an understanding of what it looks like. We'll also be able to use upperclassmen and there, there is a professional development around it where there are a group of staff. Not even being voluntold, they're volunteering to, to do this. And, and want to be a part of it. And so, again, it doesn't just have to be support staff, it can be any, um, staff member that's interested. There's usually one or two that are the go-to people, um, for the, for the program. We've reached out to other schools that have utilized this program and they have found it very successful. So we're looking forward to starting that process in the spring. So then by the time the fall comes in twenty-twenty-two, it will be up and running and everybody will have had the training that they need to prior. So we kind of slowed down the process a little bit so we can set it up for success rather than just saying we have it. And then another piece that we're looking at, um, for our freshmen in particular, so after talking with high school administration and Kim and support staff, um, we're finding, as we had said before, that our students don't seem as, um, ready or even know what to do in school. And so our freshmen, we would like to support them in that. And, um, so Kim was able to find the Brown Center out of UNH. It's, it's, they're hands-on, they're they're a program where it's almost similar to Nature's Classroom, um, in the sense where it's this, some people may say it's fluff stuff, but if we present it the right way, we know how important SEL is, um, for our staff, but our students to, to be successful in the world. And so we're looking at, again, starting that process and setting this up for success. We're going to meet with, so the administration is on board. We're going to meet with the support staff to talk about what the structure is going to look like, um, what they think is going to work for our students. And then we're going to bring the Brown Center in, um, to have another meeting so they can, we can all be on the same page. And then move forward with next steps as to having them come into the building and meet with, I think almost up to twenty-five groups, um, keeping the, the groups about tw-.
We said fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty.
Yeah.
So, um, and then one staff. So there's gonna be some logistic pieces, but that's the technical that we can, that part we can handle. It's really being, having the students, uh, connect with people, learn about social awareness and not being on your phone all the time. Knowing how to self-manage or self-regulate when you do get frustrated or upset. And they do it in a very creative way. Um, so we're looking forward to having them come in, most in the spring, we believe.
Yep. We might even be able to do some, some groups starting in, right after the new year. And they call them their portable programs because when you go to see them, you do rope climbing, there's all kinds of adventure things that they do outside. But they've also built these portable programs that they can bring to schools. Um, and we're hoping that in the spring, we will be able to identify some of our students who might need to have that experience. And our goal is to, you know, get some feedback about how this works and if it is a good experience for us and we see that it can be sustainable, I think we'd like to look at, um, our incoming freshmen and start having those conversations and being able to expose students to those opportunities before they come back to school. So very excited about doing it. And I love that we're doing it with our adjustment counselors guidance. Steve really wants us to consider the health teachers because they see everybody. And so we're gonna find some creative ways to make sure that all of those, um, individuals can be part of that program.
So those are just a few of the highlights, um, that are happening in the district. We're always welcome to feedback and hearing what's working and what's not working, or if you have an idea. So that's it for right now. Questions?
Any questions on that case? Sue, then Melissa?
So, did you find that there's more particular grade level, ID kindergarten, early childhood, that had more struggles with the social emotional?
During the pandemic and coming back, I, you know, personally, I have a grandson that was in kindergarten last year and he's really struggling. I mean, he's not in this district, but, you know.
Definitely kindergarten. Yeah. We were surprised, actually. It was sort of a aha moment for us. I think we just thought, you know, kindergartners that age, they're pretty, even over the summer, the kids that looked, where we saw our summer students, we had a good summer program and definitely kids were a little more wiggly and we knew that that was gonna happen. They hadn't been used to sitting in desks and chairs. But overall, it went very well. But those were also our students who we saw the most because those were the students that we brought back. And so we definitely saw kindergarten. I, I think it was a surprise for us. We didn't expect that. Um, and then I think our freshmen.
So what are you doing like for the kindergarten? Because I mean, those are really critical years, you know, that they've kind of lost. You know, and I, I've heard different things. Some parents want to keep their kids back. Like, what's, what's our experience here?
Yeah, we're definitely not having those conversations yet because we always try to keep moving forward with students. But, you know, we're finding that we're having to use a lot more of our resources in the school and people are just shifting their thinking a little bit. This is where the support needs to be right now. This is where we're gonna provide it. Um, and.
And the basics, I think, of just even getting into the routine, it's just taking longer than what it typically has. So for the Ks and the ones that really weren't in school and didn't understand it, um, our sixth graders, so, and then, so those transition grades, I think are the ones that are struggling the most. So I think people are just trying to be patient and, um, understand it's just gonna take a little longer to get into that routine, but it doesn't mean they have anything less. It's just taking a little bit longer.
We're seeing the kindergarten are really, they're in a great place right now. It did take a lot longer to get those routines going and now here are the holidays, right? So everybody, you type it up. So we're, we're preparing more for January when they come back. Don't forget, this is how we do things. I've also noticed, and you could go by any school in the morning, everybody is outside. They're greeting kids, they're saying hello. They know their students. They're saying goodbye to them. Just that good morning, how are you? Or I missed you yesterday. What happened? That means a lot. So we're hearing better things from our kindergarten right now. And our kindergarten, we're way up there. Our numbers are back up. So that's a good sign. Good sign.
I was at Francis Drake the other day and I had music playing and kids are getting off the bus and dancing into the school. It was just like a really joyful, you know, way to get kids engaged right away and they love hearing the music and kids get picked up to the music. So it's kind of fun, yeah.
Thank you.
Melissa?
So Paul has touched on it a little bit and I know Jenny, you've touched on it a little bit, but informally, and this isn't Lemonster, this is the world right now, we're seeing this huge uptick and hopefully stabilizing in behavior issues and maturity issues. Freshmen, sophomores, the transition years, right? So I'm thrilled to hear about the SEL program, but that's not till spring. So I'm kind of concerned about what we can do now where we're short school psychologists. There's issues on the buses at times and the buses are short-staffed. Are we looking at like a peer modeling National Honor Society? Can we bring some high school kids down to the middle school that are doing well? Like, what, what are we doing and I, and what can we continue to look at? So that we're not looking at kids coming into the freshman year next year. It's the kids in the freshman year this year that I'm worried about.
Right, right.
And I don't want them to miss time too.
We are actually gonna take advantage of having, when we do this with the Brown, um, Institute, we're gonna identify some soph-, um, some juniors. We're also gonna partner with those groups and, um, because we'll be doing different activities with them and then those juniors will be seniors next year and they'll already know a little bit about the Brown Institute. We can kind of expand it. But we were thinking the same thing. Kids listening to kids definitely makes a difference. We, we definitely have some Honor Society students who need to do so many community hours. We thought it'd be a great opportunity to capitalize on that. But, um, and we do have some students that are going out into the schools and doing some internships. So some of that is happening.
Great. And it's all hands-on deck, right? And so there's that piece of where all, if there's a certain school that needs different support or extra help, then whether there's a consulting agency going in or more administration or adding another, you know, another guidance staff because that's what they need. So I think we're trying to also hear where the buildings are at and listening to the staff and the administration and saying, okay, yep, this does make sense because of where you're at right now. So, so I hear, I hear you. And so I think, you know, even, um, connecting the high school, some high school students with the middle schools and doing it sooner than later, that's a great idea. So, so let's talk about that.
Thank you.
I wish I had, I wish there was a more specific
I know.
answer. But just know that, you know, we're all, we're all in it together and working on it for sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Ron, then Mike?
Go ahead, Mike. Well, I, uh, you know, the first presentation we had,
Attuned. The attuned?
Yeah, the attuned presentation. And I had underlined these things while I was reading them at home and it's directed towards you, Jen. Don't take it personally. And Paula, you can jump in anytime to stop me. You know, the, the, the Brown, uh, event that you're talking about. And over here, the key gaps of the staff lead district takes on too many initiatives and program changes. We'd like to have more voice in decision-making. One, what, what, would, would the Brown thing replace something? Two, how much more involvement or less involvement are the teachers gonna be? And fill in the blanks with the questions. I, you know, the, the gap is right there. I'm just asking.
So this is part of, so what people have acknowledged is that our freshman students are struggling with overall their, um, self-management and self, social awareness and just our SEL, the five components, right? So we're looking at trying to implement something, but I think what Kim had said before was that we're looking at this being sustainable. We're not looking for a one-and-done and I've, I've heard that before, um, with initiatives, but our goal, and when I say our, with the administration here, is that we are looking to have our students receive this support and then be able to, to do it again next year and then the year after that because that's how important it is. So, I don't know if that's answering your question, but.
Is there replacing anything?
No. No.
It's, it's one of those, it's an experience, right? Like a, like a ropes course, or something like that, just getting kids to work together, to trust with another, to use their communication skills to accomplish a task, to create a culture of.
So it's not going to replace anything, but it's, it's still going to involve, it's still going to involve the teacher and the students.
Yes. And right now, we're focusing mostly on the counselor, the Adjustment Counselors and Guidance Counselors, so we're actually, have a lunch meeting with them on Thursday, and we actually want their input. They're in front of those students every day, they know where the areas of need are. We can sit behind the scenes and say, this is what we think it is, but they know, they're living it every day, and so we want them to sort of identify what are the four biggest areas that you think we need to be focused on, so that we can at least start there.
And the redirection, are they going to have to redirect some of their format? With the children, with the kids?
So that, that'll be a piece of the Brown Center letting, that's part of the PD with the teachers. So we will also be following up with the teachers and the staff that are running these groups, so that they know what, what challenges they may run into, and then be able to debrief after the fact.
And they're going to have to unlearn something?
Possibly.
The teachers and the students?
Possibly.
Can somebody just jump in and stop me?
Well, I think, Jen, it answered you, that, that some students might need to relearn, you know, different coping skills and different ways to regulate themselves if they haven't established, you know, more healthier or more appropriate ways. And other students are going to just be validated and increase, you know, their self-confidence and their self-esteem, and their ability to, you know, socially interact and handle stressors. So it really depends on the child, Ron. And I think we're going to.
This thing came out, it hit me right in my forehead, and I just figured I should take advantage of it.
I think to your point on that, Ron, the, just because this isn't replacing anything, doesn't mean that through our work with the tuned, that something else will go and lessen the load of initiatives, to, to the point you're making.
Well, I'm not making any point, I just want to know, is this going to be a better diamond that's going to have to shine?
Well, it's something new for us, too, and so we'll have to, you know, regroup and get some feedback from staff, too, as to whether they're seeing, you know, the, the, the things that we're supporting students with, are we seeing a difference? Do we notice that it's making an impact? And so that'll help with our decision-making as we move forward, and we may have to tweak it a couple of times before it works.
And tweak it for the students, you know, those comfortable and successful. They won't know until we do it.
No, I know that, but, you know, you're saying the students can have to unlearn things. She also said maybe the teachers are going to have to unlearn. And I, I don't, I, I don't know about you, but change is difficult, no matter who you are, student or teacher.
We would agree.
And it, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult, because it, it, it requires a lot of intellectual muscle, some that hasn't been used, and some that has been used. And as you know, muscle is memory. Sometimes the muscle has to relearn certain things.
Very true.
Yes or no? Am I just barking up the wrong tree?
Yeah.
Yeah, no one's disagreeing with you, Ron. Mike, you have a question?
Anyway, thanks.
Yeah, so you mentioned the K through eight program, and how useful it is that it's now standardized across grade levels and across schools, everybody speaks the same language. And we've also mentioned to which one of the groups that's struggling is freshmen. And I have to think that that's all, often largely because there's some disconnect between what K through eight has prepared them for and what high school expects. So I'm wondering what we're doing to actually get the K through eight program connected to what's going on in the high school. Are there high school, you know, it's. Does that program to, have we actually talked to people in the high school about what they expect, so that the K through eight program is preparing students to actually be successful freshmen? Are the high school teachers being involved in this, so they know, like, it's great we have a common language, except if it stops at eighth grade, and then the high school teachers are doing something different? That would, that would be a disconnect for the students. So I'm just curious the extent to which we're trying to connect those things up, and maybe there's some areas that could be there.
So we've done, we've done quite a bit of training around those five core areas around SEL for all of our teachers. So any type of curriculum or efforts around this are based in that. So we talk about self-regulation, self-awareness, all of those things, that, those are the expectations. So if you're a five-year-old, what are the expectations for social awareness? That means you can't sit on the teacher's lap and read the book with her, right? So those are the type of social interactions you have. But now, when you're in high school, what does that mean? So it's always those five key components, K on up, but it has to be age-appropriate. So the second step program, K to eight, right now, just helps the developmental stage, and the high school teachers know that that's what they're working on. So it has to have a different face when it gets to the high school and the independence up here. So it's all based on those five core, and everybody has that, and they're all working on the same thing at the same time.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to report the student representative on a school committee. We had tabled it last time for a legal rendering on whether a student who is out of district who school choice is in, whether that's through CTEI or just the regular ed population, whether they would be able to be a representative. And the verdict was, yes, anybody who's attending Leominster High School, CTE, LCE is considered a student who has all the rights of any other student to participate in any of the activities. So with that being said, we do need to vote on that. This will be our second reading. Melissa?
We still haven't gotten clarification, though, which was Michael's original question about the membership and the numbers, though, correct?
Yes, so, I mean, I still had some question, but the letter we have really focuses on lemons to resumes.
Right, yeah.
I'm persuaded by Mark's, Mark Terry's analysis that we should, as I believe you just said, drop the lemons to resumes, say, you're a Leominster student, therefore you're eligible if your peers vote for you. The other issue, Mark does reference, the state law does say that the student advisory group, they themselves are supposed to elect a chair by June 1st, and that chair is supposed to be the member who attends our meetings, but our policy has us rotating between the three.
Right.
And that sounds like a great idea, I just don't know if we can legally impose that when the state law said they're supposed to pick one, and that one attends. And, and then the last thing, and Mark does, did not address the issue of the state law says five people, and we've chosen three. So, I don't know. I'm, I'm happy with half of this, I feel like half my questions got answered and half did.
All right.
So I can put it back out to him?
Put it back on, yeah.
Okay. Would you mind?
Do you want me to write them down for you?
Yeah, like specifically.
Yep.
Okay, what you want him to.
Sure.
Address.
To address, and then policies in two weeks, so we can bring it back to the policy.
Sure. And I do think, you know, one of the unique things about our school is we have three schools within a school, and most people don't.
And that's when the law was written, it certainly was not reflective of our current status.
You know, as I said last time, I had, this seemed like a great solution, I have no objection to what we came up with, other than I just want to make sure we're not going to get in trouble at some point, because we didn't what, do what Master General Law said we were supposed to do exactly.
Got it. Okay. So I will send that to him as soon as I hear from him.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll put that back on the agenda for this meeting. All right, we have finance subcommittee meeting, and I guess approval of the minutes first.
I'll make a motion to go to the minutes, second.
Now, anybody have any questions, omissions, and errors? So Sue, then Isabel.
Third time, Isabel. Page two. Item three, approval of minutes. Item two B, the superintendent goals were initially brought before the committee on the September 20th meeting. That was August 16th, not September 20th.
Anything else, Sue?
That's it.
Isabel?
On the first page, my name is listed twice under present.
We wanted to make sure you were here.
I was doubly here.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
I'm on the bottom, and then above Sue also.
Yep.
It's spelled right twice.
It is. Good job, Chris.
Perfect. Make those corrections. Melissa?
And under new business, I just want to note that I've requested information about the emotional and behavioral interventions that have been required at the schools.
Melissa?
One final thing, the last sentence in section four, it is the one we're willing that we should be the one.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, with those corrections, all those in favor? Pose, motion carries. Now we'll move on to finance subcommittee.
All right, finance subcommittee met tonight. We reviewed the financial report, and the revolving fund information, usual stuff. We do have some warrants that we reviewed that we need to vote on as a full school committee, so I'll bring those up now. We have from the general fund, warrant 20, totaling $174,212.45. Warrant 21, totaling $2,655,055.22. And warrant 22, totaling $517,563.91. From grants and revolving funds, we have warrant 20 totaling $83,595.17. Warrant 21 totaling $616,419.19. And warrant 22 totaling $209,931.64. Finance has reviewed these and found them in order, so I make a motion that we approve the warrants as well.
Okay, there's a motion in second, any comments? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries, yes, Dean?
You can sit on it.
Thank you.
Two other items. Last time, we got a report from the business office, from Melanie, detailing the state of the ESER one, ESER two, and ESER three funds. I mentioned last time that we had asked her to add to that the dates that each of those ends, so we have a new version of that in our finance packets that you should all have available to us tonight, where she's added that at the top. So ESER one ends September 30th of 2022, ESER two ends September 30th of 2023, and ESER three ends September 30th of 2024. It's September 30th, which is very weird for us, but that's because that's when the federal fiscal year ends. We also discussed the fact that the ESER two money, each of these things, you, you don't just apply for the total pot, you have to apply for each, a separate application for each project within that pot. Anything over $30,000 requires really extensive hoops to be jumped through. So to get the ESER two money is not one application, it's a whole lot of them. I believe, if I remember correctly, for ESER two, all of the requests are in, most of them have been approved, some are still pending. For ESER three, we are still in the process of creating and submitting all of the various requests for that money. So we should, that means we should be aware, for example, that, you know, $11.2 million of ESER three, none of that is in our possession yet. That doesn't happen until after each individual thing gets approved. And we didn't have the exact number, but not all of the ESER two money is here yet, because some of those applications are still pending. So we have further asked that the next time we get this report, we add on how much of the money is in our hands and how much is still pending within each category. So you'll see that the next time we see this. Lastly, just an informational thing that might be of interest to somebody listening, I don't know, but the food service is short-staffed to the extent of 20, they're 20% down. Bob Burr has recommended that he's planning to, he's letting us know that he's planning to increase the hourly wage for food service workers. He's essentially going to, he's going to get to the $15 minimum wage a year early to make this more attractive. We don't need to vote on that, that's really just informational, that comes out of the food service revolving fund line, and they have plenty of money to cover this difference. But if there's anybody listening who would like a food service job, we have plenty of options, and we're hiring, and the pay is about to go up.
And they're a great company to work for.
And they're great, as we've seen, you know, Bob's winning awards because they're doing great stuff for Leominster.
Absolutely.
So I believe that concludes everything I needed to say for finance.
Great, thank you. And Ron, I don't believe there was a finance policy.
No, we did not have a policy today, like Paul said, we have it on December 20th. And we'll be discussing about the student.
Thank you. Apps obsolete equipment for our action items, it's a, a sheet of paper, the items for consideration.
So I'll make a motion that we consider, we designate this list of equipment as obsolete and surplus is the important word, right?
All right, any thoughts, comments?
There's a Dell 790 OptiFlex, I think that's like 20 years old.
I'm sure all of this stuff is well beyond its lifespan.
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Older new business, we have our enrollment report and HR report in our package.
And just note, we keep a very close eye on that kindergarten number, we are back up to typical numbers in kindergarten. So that is a great feeling.
Paula, do you remember, do you remember what the enrollment number was on October 1st that we had to report?
Nope.
I'm trying, I can't remember, because I know, I just remember it was definitely smaller than the actual number we have now, I was trying to remember how much smaller.
I want to say 5999, so I think we're, yeah.
Somewhere, somewhere around 70 more kids than we have then.
I also appreciate the adult population, I think, included in here, that was, that was nice, thank you.
Yes, we're watching that very closely.
And we have 811 children total, for anybody watching, so. All right, anything else going on for new and old business that anybody wants to bring forward? Nope. Okay, Melissa?
Just sorry, really quickly, I got an email from one of the principals just about COVID, and it was mentioning and requesting that parents make sure their phone numbers and emails are up to date, because they've been trying to contact some families as kids are testing positive and phones are disconnected or changed. So just a general reminder to make sure you keep your phone numbers and emails up to date.
And I was just going to thank the general announcement that, you know, the holiday season is upon us, COVID numbers are rising, this is a time where people are generally, you know, more stressed, and it's important for, you know, both staff and students and community members to take a deep breath, make sure you're taking care of yourself, and, you know, taking things one step at a time, because this can be a very overwhelming time for many families. There's a lot of supports in our community, so if you need any, please reach out to certainly the school system, your principals, the administration, but certainly to our town hall and other community agencies that would be able to offer support. So just, you know, for folks to know that this is a difficult time of year anyways, but particularly with COVID and all the things we've gone through over the last, you know, almost two years, everybody needs a little support now and then, and there's nothing wrong with that. Next time, we will be meeting, and it'll be the last meeting for several of our committee members, so hopefully everyone will be here to wish them upon farewell. And we obviously will talk in our next, next meeting, but about appreciating everyone's efforts. So I think that's it, if no one else has anything, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. A motion in second, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much.